I'm now called to April 4, 2022, Blue Springs City Council meeting order if you would say for me observe moment silence and I will lead you in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. I'm going to welcome you in attendance as well as those that might be watching it live on one of the cable channels. Next we have a confirmation of the form.
Council members Kayler.
Present.
Levise.
Here.
Fowler.
Here.
Erickson.
Present.
Edmondson.
Here.
Culpepper.
Present.
Mayor Ross.
Present.
Next we have consent agenda. Councilmember Edmondson asked if we pull item D or there are other items need be pulled?
Uh, sir?
Yes?
Your honor, I'd like to just have a brief discussion when we get to item number I.
Would you like that pull up a discussion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll do that. Is there a motion to approve other items on the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Councilmembers Kayler.
Aye.
Levise.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Culpepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Okay, Councilman Edmondson.
Thank you, your honor. Uh, in regards to the vote on the approval of fireworks permit, I will need to reclusive myself as a member of the Blue Springs Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association. I may have a conflict of interest in voting on this because they have applied for a permit and I do have a managerial part of that tip, so I will be reclusive myself until the vote is done.
You're going to recuse yourself and leave the room?
That's what I'm doing.
Good. Your honor?
Yes.
Do we have to ask him back?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
But we'll ask him back anyway.
Okay.
Okay, is there any discussion about that? Is there a motion to approve it with him leaving the room?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign. You can come back now.
Cheryl.
He said Cheryl Chase again.
Yeah.
Okay, Councilman Erickson, item I.
Uh, yes, sir, I appreciate you letting me talk just for a second on that. I don't have an objection to the appointments, I'm just curious if we're, since we are in the process of revising a vast amount of material with the commissions and the boards and the way it's done and selected, and also with respect for the HRC that we worked on last year, I don't think we've done anything with that, I'm just, I'm just curious if maybe, uh, this might be putting a cart before the horse, so to speak, to do this before we act on the commission recommendation.
Uh, I, I, and I'll ask Cheryl to come up, we can talk about it a little bit, but basically, we, these appointments need to be made and not necessarily wait until we get that done, and I think that the rules will still apply.
That is correct. The CDBG appointments are made so in order that we can have a meeting in May, and that way we can actually pull those members to make sure that they're available for a meeting. And then the MCRC meeting, we have something scheduled for the second week of, of April, so that's why those are appointed. Those, uh, the appointments from the Park Commission, Planning Commission, those are from a subsidiary board that also, that by their affiliation is appointed to the CDBG Committee, so we had to do one before we could do the other.
Okay, so the cart's not before the horse. Uh, thank you for that, I appreciate it, and with that being said, I'd like to move that we accept item I.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Not all in favor, aye? Oh, wait, uh, Councilman Kayler.
No, that was on fireworks, but we missed it.
We missed it on the fireworks?
Yeah, I, I blew that one up.
So did I.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign, motion carriers. Next we have a presentation, but it says something about a citation, is this something that Chief Muntz should be doing since there's a citation?
No, sir. No.
Okay, you're going to do it as part of the story. Okay, I got you.
Um, at the 2022 MPRA, which is Missouri Parks and Recreation Association Annual Convention, we were, uh, we had nominated two of our residents that are going to be honored this evening for their outstanding contribution to parks and recreation. Dale Carter and Cindy Miller worked on the park sales tax renewal, and with their work, they were awarded the contribution. This video is a video that was made for their presentation.
Dale Carter is a forty-one-year radio veteran who has been on air in program stations in Evansville, Hartford, and Kansas City. Dale served the city of Blue Springs on the city council from 2010 to 2019. During those nine years, he served as Mayor Pro Tim twice and was council liaison to boards and commissions including parks, public safety, arts, and solid waste. Cindy Miller's passion and focus has been revitalizing the Blue Springs downtown district as a founding member and president of Downtown Alive Blue Springs. Under Cindy's leadership, Downtown Alive has been successful at fostering investment and redevelopment in the district through the promotion of incentive programs offered by the city. Many projects have been completed and much growth has occurred. Most recently, Cindy led a project to construct a gateway arch at the entrance into the downtown district, which was funded one hundred percent by private donations. As an associate community in the Missouri Main Street Program, Cindy has been instrumental in guiding the group to win many awards and gain much recognition over the last ten years. In 2021, Dale and Cindy accepted the role as the co-chairs for the renewal of the Park Sales Tax Citizen Committee. They led a citizens group to ensure funding for the Blue Springs Park System would remain for future generations through the no sunset ballot measure. The team worked tirelessly developing mailings, billboard ads, yard signs, social media campaigns, and various other activities to ensure the successful renewal of the referendum. Through their efforts, the park sales tax was renewed on April 6, 2021 with an eighty percent yes vote, providing more than four million dollars annually to improve parks and recreation services. Without Dale Carter and Cindy Miller's efforts, the renewal would not have been possible. Congratulations Dale Carter and Cindy Miller, the 2022 MPRA individual citation award recipients.
If you think back, uh, about a year ago tonight, it's about this time that we were all going, okay, tomorrow's the big day, and through their work and contribution, you saw the rendering of the, the aquatic center that is coming, and, and through their work and their dedication, that has made this, this facility possible, along with many other park improvements for years to come for our community, and I am pleased to present Dale Carter with the citation award from MPRA as well as Cindy Miller with the citation award. Certainly appreciate it. I just want to say, thank you so much, it's been a pleasure to work with Dale on this campaign. I moved here mainly for the parks in the school district, so I'm super thrilled that the parks tax passed and was overwhelmingly supported. Couldn't have done it without Dale, so, yeah, thank you.
Couldn't have done it without Cindy either. Uh, thank you all for your support as well as we got this thing passed, eighty percent of the vote, incredible, the parks look amazing, and other than that, I'll just take Jerry Kayler's term here and say ditto.
You know what, thank, thank, thank you all very much for that, and you know, when you have success like that, in August, we got another initiative that's coming up, and I think I've got some people that I can probably call on.
Before, before we finish, there is one other award that was presented at the MPRA conference. Delaney Johnson received also the Outstanding Professional Award for her work in argue sports programs, and Delaney's here this evening, and just want to present this to her as well, and then ask the mayor to come down and, and take a picture with him if you could.
All right.
Mr. Carter, we appreciate you staying up late and coming.
Isn't that the reason they put it on the first part of the agenda?
Well, she just tells us to move, is that what they did?
Come on, you. You haven't figured this out?
Yeah? Well, she's doing it this way instead of this way.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you Cindy.
Again, congratulations to all of you, job well done.
Your honor?
Yes?
Can, can I just say, I want to say thank you to Cindy and Dale as well, congratulations. And I also want to say to Delaney, uh, you know, I'm a consumer of the Parks Department as well, and my kids just finished basketball this year, and, uh, she was very, we got weekly emails with a lot of information and had some tragedy thrown at her, something you don't expect in this line of work, and she handled it great. Councilman Kayler and I got to go and participate in that right during one of the basketball games, and it was, it was a great deal, so I'm going to give Delaney credit for that as well.
All right. Okay, we will move on to the next item, which is a public hearing on Universal Auto Plaza. Jamarcus?
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record. City Council information form dated March 29, 2022 with the following attachments: staff report with attachments, application with attachments, affidavit of publication in the examiner on March 12, 2022, one hundred and eighty-five-foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within one hundred and eighty-five feet of sight, copy of letter sent to said property owners, title for land use section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference, bill approving the rezoning and bill approving the conditional use permit. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Well, I got some bad to say.
Thank you, mayor, thank you, council. Before you this evening is a request for rezoning of the southeast section of 1600 South Outer Road property from general business to regional commercial and approval of a conditional use permit to expand and redevelop the parking lot for Universal Auto Plaza at 1500 South Outer Road. The first request is a rezoning of the southeast section of 1600 South Outer Road to regional commercial. Rezoning this section is the first step in allowing the property to expand the parking lot and will complement the adjacent regional commercial to the east. The second request is a conditional use permit under the outdoor sales and service equipment review criteria for those standards to accommodate the expansion and redevelop the parking lot. Based on a review criteria, the CUP meets all the review criteria except for the existing legal non-conforming minimum of twenty-five feet from the street right-of-way. The paving plan brings the site closer into compliance than the current existing with a setback of eighteen point eighty-four feet. Staff reviewed the rezoning request under the review criteria and finds that the rezoning request meets the other goals within the 2014 comprehensive plan. Staff reviewed the request for the conditional use permit under the outdoor sales and service equipment review criteria for those standards to accommodate the expansion and redevelop the parking lot. Based on a review criteria, the CUP meets all the review criteria except for the existing legal non-conforming minimum of twenty-five feet from the street right-of-way. The paving plan brings the site closer into compliance than the current existing with a setback of eighteen point eighty-four feet. Staff reviewed the rezoning request under the review criteria and finds that the rezoning request meets the other goals within the 2014 comprehensive plan. Staff reviewed the request for the conditional use permit under the outdoor sales and service equipment review criteria for those standards to accommodate the expansion and redevelop of the parking lot. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on March 28 in which an adjacent property owner with, um, made a, um, suggestion about the cars parking on their property and requests a privacy fence. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the rezoning, ten in favor and zero opposed, and a conditional use permit, eight in favor and two opposed. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning and approval of the conditional use permit. I'll be happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Any question from the council? Jamarcus? Seeing none, is the applicant present? Want to be sworn in?
Matt, yeah, Matt Slish, Engineering Solutions, 50th Southeast 30th Street, Lee Summup, Missouri. Um, so yeah, we're here this evening on behalf of Universal Auto. Um, it's an existing facility that's been locating and operating at that southwest corner of 15th and the outer road for a number of years. Essentially, kind of on the southwesterly portion of the site, there was a vacant piece of ground, um, that was kind of in between the car lot and the pediatrics facility or the doctor's offices in there, um, so the developer went and approached them just about purchasing that ground and started this ball rolling. Um, and so, again, the, the intent and then plan is to expand the parking area, to have more sales and inventory area, that when inventory does come back someday, hopefully they'll be able to utilize it, um, but essentially just expanding the parking lot facility. There's no changes or modifications requested to the, the building, um, and then the one comment I would have, I guess, is, um, during the planning commission, uh, the conditional use conversation, I think there was some negative, um, or no votes essentially that happened on that purchase, for the reason of the existing parking lot that exists today essentially is too close to the existing street or the right-of-way that's out there. Our parking lot on the westerly side that we're doing and improving will be further back, but I think there was some misunderstanding that that legal non-conforming use will remain and exist, the purpose being is it's located kind of to the north and east side of the existing facility, so there's really no way to bring it into compliance without removing an entire row of parking, so we ask, and I guess just for some clarification to get to that side of it, so here for any questions you might have.
Any questions from council? Councilman Edmondson?
Uh, at that planning commission, I know it was discussed, I believe after the neighboring person got up, owner, and talked about that parking lot, about possibility of putting a fence up and seeing if you guys would be interested in doing that, have you taken that into consideration?
Yeah, so, so that comment, I think, was made, and it kind of took the owner by surprise, um, because his, the resident or owner to the south believes that there are cars being parked on the site. Um, certainly the owner would contest that it is not anything of inventory material, and it's hard to believe that any user or person that's purchasing a car would park that far south and then walk up to the facility, so we're not certain, there are a large number of residential duplexes to the south, likely thinking, and also to the east, likely believing that most of the cars that are coming on his lot are that side of it or used from that side of it. Um, the owner's fine with a fence, um, if that's something that the, the council would like to see, but it's our opinion, their elevated view, um, and where our site is, the fence is going to not provide much screening or effort on that side of it, but certainly if that's, um, your discretion, we're fine with that as well.
I think, I think his comment was related to the number of vehicles that are maybe either inoperative or maybe they're trade-ins and sit along that back line of your property and those back parking spaces, which naturally, that's probably where you would put them because you've got limited amount of space for, for the items you're selling, uh, but I took it to believe that that's what he was intending was to try to cut down on some of the visibility of that.
Right, and again, like I say, we're open to that side of it, but just from an elevation perspective, where his parking lot is and where our parking lot is, even with the fence, you'll be able to see over top of it, but again, if that is your suggestion, we're fine with it as well, but just don't believe the impact will be there.
Okay. Anyone else? Councilman?
Uh, yes, sir, I'd like to, um, maybe you can, maybe this is in the literature, I'm not sure, but the parking on the north side, uh, as it sits right now, the last time I drove by it, it looks like it's mostly inventory. Uh, will that always be inventory, or will that be, in this sketch, will that be customer parking, or are you going to have inventory all the way to the street?
No, so, so right now, directly to the north of the site is typically customer parking, um, they get kind of jammed and convoluted in there just because of the number of people trying to maneuver around. Inventory is intended to be more on the westerly side than we can, we see we've kind of created a showcase pad on that westerly type entrance, um, leaving more room in front of the building directly for customers, so that is kind of the customer area, but right now, it gets kind of the overflow of inventory and other such use.
So, if, if I'm correct then, that these, the two little, uh, C-looking things that are in the middle, north of that would be customer parking?
Likely that'll be most of the customer parking.
Likely or will be, I'm curious.
Well, I mean, like I said, the intent would be, yes, that's where customers would park, is up on that side, inventory would be west and south.
Okay.
Inventory, like I say, typically when they get purchased or get prepared to sell, they come up and get parked in that area before they get picked up and taken out, but other than, like I say, that showcase area on the westerly side, I would expect most of that area on the north side to be customer.
Okay, I don't want to belabor this too much, but I, you just said the intent was for that to be customer parking, and then you said when they're ready to sell, then you're going to bring inventory up front, so it's kind of a mixed bag, right?
Well, no, so if you came in, you looked at a car, you suggested that we worked out a deal, we would take the car, they would prepare the car, they'd bring the car up front, so when you purchased the car, you walk out of the front of the building, walk to the keys in your car, and you go.
Okay, so, so a single event or?
Right, so it's, it's upon purchase or something like that, that would be your way to receive the car.
I understand, thank you.
Right.
Anyone else? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony. We'll go to the public in one, what is like speaking support of? Support of? Opposition to? Opposition to? Close the public hearing, we'd like to introduce the bill number forty, forty-nine sixty-six.
I'll introduce, your honor. First reading of bill number four nine six six, an ordinance rezoning the southeast section of 600 Northwest South Outer Road from GB General Business District to RC Regional Commercial District.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Third, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Hold up, hold up.
If your honor, somewhere, Matt, if you're, you can tell me where I'd like to add that we should have a, a fence required put in on the southern, southern boundary.
That would be a condition with the conditional use permit.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign?
Second reading of bill number four nine six six, an ordinance rezoning the southeast section of 600 Northwest South Outer Road from GB General Business District to RC Regional Commercial District.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmembers Levise.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Culpepper.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously and given ordinance number five zero nine nine.
Okay, next is introductory reading of bill number forty-nine sixty-seven.
I'll introduce, your honor.
First reading of bill number four nine six seven, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to expand an existing parking lot for outdoor sales and services at 1500 Northwest South Outer Road.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Third, second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye. If I may?
Again?
I, I would like to amend this to add in that a fence be installed on the southern boundary of the property.
Okay, we have a motion to amend it to include a fence along the south boundaries. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is any discussion on it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Uh, can we stipulate what type of fence? Do you want to stipulate type of fences?
It, if you want, uh, it doesn't really matter, I just think a fencing should be up.
Chain link fence?
Well, not a chain.
Masonary fence?
Yeah.
Barbed wire fence? I mean, a gum sixteen, I'm just.
Why don't we just say privacy and be done with it? Because that's what they're trying to do.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine, I understand that, but we have a lot of, we've talked about that at some other subdivisions on the south side, and it's an opportunity to do something nice.
Well, that particular one had to do with being on seven highways.
I understand that.
Some, some aesthetic value, this, along the back.
Basically, a private fence is what I was thinking, a wood construction privacy fence.
Do you want to make it out the director's?
Discretion.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
With the goal of creating a visual buffer between this land use and the use to the south.
Then you guys can work it out with the owner and figure out.
Yes, in that case, staff would recommend adding a condition under section two, there's two conditions there, uh, we would recommend adding a condition three, that a privacy fence, six-foot tall privacy fence be installed along the southern, uh, portion of the property as determined through the site plan and design review, uh, application process.
So that's section two, and we're just adding in an item three on that section?
That's correct.
Okay. That's, I'm in favor of that.
Okay, so you, everybody understands, Jack is writing.
Um, can you re-say?
Are you writing?
The full motion to amend? I'm sorry, just for clarification.
Okay, so we're amending section two, adding item three, which would be, uh, the condition would add in a privacy fence along the southern boundary of the property? And if you want to, Matt, would you want to say, or, Mike, you want to say six foot?
Uh, the six foot would be what we would recommend.
And you, you were saying recommending instead of privacy fence, a, a boundary or?
Uh, a privacy fence to, to screen it, you know, because of, of any kind of, there's, you know, metal picket fences, wrought iron style fence, and if the goal is to create a visual buffer, we'd recommend a, a privacy fence.
Create a visual buffer.
Yeah, and, and determine the exact.
Visual buffer.
Visual buffer, and that the exact location, length, uh, how long it takes up of the property be determined through that site plan and design review process, because I can't give you off the top of my head that it should be the entire southern property line, or if it should be a thousand feet or whatnot, so we can figure that out down that time.
Probably your setbacks from the road.
Yes, so we, we just leave that to that time.
Okay, clear as mud?
Yep.
All right.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye for the amendment?
Aye.
All right, now we have the secondary, is that the first?
First is already passed.
First reading as amended.
First as amended. Okay. Okay, we didn't vote on the, we, we voted on amendment, so now it's the first reading as amended.
Yes.
Okay, that. Who made the motion for that?
Move. Bill be approved on its first reading as amended.
Yes.
Yeah, your second.
Second.
Okay, any, any further discussion on it to make it more confusing? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign?
Second reading of bill number four nine six seven as amended, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to expand an existing parking lot for outdoor sales and services at 1500 Northwest South Outer Road.
Your honor, move the bill as amended, be approved on its second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call please.
Councilmembers Fowler.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Culpepper.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously and given ordinance number five one zero zero.
Next we have another public hearing on the amendment for the city of Blue Springs Amendmental Code, Unified Development Code, related to the city council, board, and commissions. Cheryl?
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record. City Council information form dated March 29, 2022 with the following attachments: staff report with attachments, application with attachments, affidavit of publication in the examiner on March 12, 2022, title for land use section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference, PowerPoint presentation and proposed Code of Ordinances amendments. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Okay, Ms. Cheryl.
Actually, I believe Councilmember Culpepper is going to.
Uh, well, I just wanted to make a statement about this, we had, several of us had looked at issues over the past several years where we have some inconsistencies, and we felt that it would be a good time, uh, and our charter encourages us to do that periodically, to review, uh, the councils, the boards, and commissions so that we have consistency throughout. So, we have worked, I believe we were, spent ten weeks, uh, meeting and, uh, had a culmination of all of the department managers and three councilmen, and we came up with some adjustments that we felt would be important to make us consistent, and so that's what we have before us tonight.
Thank you for that. So the, uh, as, as Councilmember Culpepper mentioned, we had, uh, met for almost four months, and, um, we had over seventy-five issues that were brought before the work group to address from various, either the, uh, staff liaisons or the council members themselves. So that's a lot of information to try to pack into a five-minute presentation, so bear with me, I will speak as quickly as I can without sounding like a used car salesman. Uh, the disclaimer on a used car salesman, excuse me. Um, it's, the, uh, tonight we'll be, uh, reviewing code amendments and, uh, rules of procedure, uh, uh, options that are proposed. As far as the amendments to the city code, we have, uh, citizen members, currently there are some of our city's boards that have a membership requirement of being a resident, and others do not, and so what we're recommending is to make this unanimous, uh, and consistent through all of the boards, requiring that any resident member or citizen member be a resident. Uh, the community partner appointments, uh, say from Blue Springs School District, Jackson County, uh, the, the CJC, all of those are exempt from that. However, the appointment must be an active member, employee of the organization, or a representative of that agency, um, an employee of the agency. Uh, by removing the district-specific requirement, we'll, we can fill the vacancies more quickly and allow the board to continue operate, to operate with full capacity. We'll make rep, uh, every effort to make representation equal among the council districts as possible. Uh, we'll post openings for any, uh, vacancies on social media if we don't have a qualified candidate in the applicant pool, and if after one month we still haven't received an application, we will present a, a representative from another district to, uh, fill that appointment for the mayor to consider that for, an appointment. All, uh, appointments, including the community partner employment, appointments, will require city council approval. Community partner appointments will serve until they've been replaced by their agency, that's a change currently. We, um, ask that the appointments serve the same term as the resident members, and so now we're asking, this, this does hold up the appointment process at times, just waiting for appointment and confirmation letters, and they may just be reappointing the same person multiple times. So that'll help to make that a little more efficient. All right. The removal of any member by the mayor's executive order of five-sevenths vote of council is added to all the boards for consistency. This is not, it, this is not required if the member does not meet the minimum attendance requirements, and that'll be discussed here shortly. The city has two boards with state statute requires the board itself to select a chair and vice chair, and those are planning commission and the board of adjustment. All other boards will have the chair and vice chair selected by the mayor with the approval of council. The mayor and vice chair cannot serve more than two consecutive terms to allow fresh leadership opportunities. Any board that meets on a regularly scheduled basis will submit a written annual report to the council no later than April first. The report will be included on a council agenda packet under the information section. If the mayor or two council members request, the board can come back at a future agenda and present their, uh, presentation in person or their report in person, or answer any questions that the council may have had. Uh, the process also holds true for any recommendations from any of our boards. If there's a recommendation that they have voted on, it will, it will show under the information section, and if the council so chooses, we will bring it forward at a later meeting. Uh, rules of procedure will be developed for each board, which will basically follow the general guidelines of the city council's rules of procedure. Uh, all of the rules of procedure and any amendments will require approval by the city council, and any board that previously had a voting staff member, uh, has been amended to those, to remove those positions, so any voting staff, uh, positions are no longer with the, uh, in that board. We're going to discontinue, we previously had an unofficial capital improvements review committee to review CIP projects, and that was, uh, they would review that prior to that list being submitted to the city council. Uh, the membership of the tourism and visitor advisory committee has been defined as five residents. Previously, funds from the hotel motel tax were directed to pay debt service on the conference center. Now that that debt service has been paid, this committee will recommend uses of the funds for tourism purposes. And if any of the boards, uh, desire to create a subcommittee, that subcommittee would need to be submitted, the, the recommendation for the subcommittee would need to be presented to the city attorney for review to kind of discuss, uh, the purpose, the tenure, um, who would be serving on that. Once, once that position has been, that subcommittee has been approved, then it would have to be approved by the city council. And any boards receiving city funds must adhere to the city's financial policies. Uh, board-specific changes, and we'll zip through these, it looks like a lot, but I'm going to try to zip through them fairly quickly. So in addition to the previously noted universal changes, the following changes are made. The appearance review committee, we've changed the term to three years, and community development staff will review additional changes here after I finish with regard to the responsibilities of the appearance review. The development advisory commission, we've amended to remove the residency requirement for representatives of the building industry. Now they just may, need to be actively pursuing their trade with the appropriate licensing within the city of Blue Springs. Uh, the downtown review board, we've removed the staff, community development, and public works directors, and the two council members as voting members, changed the term to three years, and again, community development will discuss additional proposed changes here shortly. Uh, the economic development council, let's see why is this not moving? Economic development council, we've reduced, or we're recommending reducing the membership from fourteen to ten members. Again, there will be a residency requirement with the exception of the community partner appointments. The historic preservation commission, we will reduce from nine to seven members, removing the council member and planning commission member that are voting members currently, but they will remain on the board as, as liaisons. Uh, community development, again, will review some of the amendments that will be proposed and presented within the next ninety days for that board. Excuse me. Human relations commission, a non-voting liaison for Blue Springs School District will be added. The human relations commission now may choose to have one student member rather than the previously required two members, and meetings will now be held on an on-call as needed basis. Uh, currently, there is a requirement for a felony background check for any applicants on that board, and that has been removed. All right, land bank, uh, we didn't have any changes to the land bank structure other than the, the general ones that we discussed earlier. Uh, park commission previously, previously had district-specific requirements, that has been changed to reduce, uh, to requiring the best efforts to have equal representation on the board. Uh, planning commission, we recommend reducing from eleven members to nine. Public art commission is amended to have the residency requirement to be consistent with the other boards. Public safety citizen advisory board, again, we're removing the felony background requirement for the, for those applicants, and we'll also note in the code that preference will be given to the citizens' police academy graduates, excuse me, or former law enforcement personnel. And solid waste commission, we've changed the term to three years. The technical review committee will have a code amendment presented to change the composition of the board to that suggested by the international code council. And the tourism and advisory board, we've established that with five citizen members and to, to cover what we previously discussed as their mission. Uh, we've got, uh, five, four code amendments here, so sections one-ten, one-fifty, and one-ten oh-six-five will be repealed as the details included are, are included in other sections of the code and are no longer relevant. Section one-twelve oh-six-oh will be amended to remove the option to abstain and to define a quorum and a majority needed to pass the roll call vote. Section one-forty one-ten, or, I'm sorry, one-ten one-forty will define the entire city council. Uh, that is seven members, seven, the full seven members of the council, so six city council members, and the mayor encompass and, and what defines the entire city council. This does not take into account any vacancies, unlike our boards and commissions, they, that quorum, um, takes into account vacancies, the council does not. Uh, this will also clarify that the four votes are needed to approve any resolution or ordinance. Let me see, so rules of procedure. They'll be established and presented to the city council for approval. Highlights of those rules are as follows. All meetings will be held in person with the exception of when there's a state of emergency in place. Attendance expectations will be set for each board. Absent extenuating circumstances, members will be removed for regularly scheduled board, if, if they serve on a regularly scheduled board meeting. If twenty percent of the annual meetings are missed, so that would be five, excuse me, five for planning commission, and three for boards that meet on a monthly basis. For boards that meet on an on-call basis, members will be removed after two missed meetings, and those, since they are on call, uh, the staff does a roll call vote or a poll, asking for their availability. If somebody has stated that they are available and a meeting is scheduled for that time, and then they don't show, that's when this two, the two vacancies take into place. Uh, remember, the member will receive a warning letter if the next missed meeting will reach the threshold for removal, and reminding them of the attendance expectations. All right, liaison duties. Uh, liaison duty is basically serving from one board to another. All participation by the liaison in a meeting is at the request of the chair. Speaker appearance forms will be required for all visitors for all boards, including applicants and attorneys, and during public hearings and visitor sections of meetings. A non-resident may address the council, but the chair may announce that their statements may not be given the same weight as if it was from a resident. The quorum, quorum for the city's boards and commissions, quorum is a majority of the members for boards and commissions excluding vacancies, I just went over that just a moment ago. The quorum to hold a city council meeting is four regardless of vacancies. Uh, the majority to pass a motion, council and board of adjustment requires four votes. Um, all of the remaining boards and commissions require more than a half of the members that are present and able to vote. All right. Some quick bullets for the rules. We've previously reviewed the submission of annual reports and recommendations of the board for the information section of the agenda. The item may present, be presented at a future meeting for the, at the request of the mayor or two council members. Planning commission members can testify at a city council meeting and, at a public hearing only if they have recused themselves from discussion and vote during the planning commission meeting. Uh, oaths may be administered during public hearings as a group, including attorneys and staff. Council and planning commission members should not communicate with a developer or citizens regarding project after an application has been filed. The best course of action is to advise the citizen of the public hearing and to provide testimony so, and, and so that way they can provide testimony so all members of the board have the same information. A future code amendment will outline the process to have applicants hold neighborhood meetings and communication with members of the board prior to filing the application. Okay, parliamentary procedure highlights. Uh, we're basically accepting or adopting Robert's rules with a few exceptions. The, uh, one of those exceptions is we will no longer have the option to abstain. If, uh, someone continues to vote abstain after a reminder from the city attorney or the staff liaison, that vote will result in a yes vote. If a member doesn't have enough information to vote, they should request a continuance to allow staff to gather requested information. If the motion to continue fails, the member will vote yes or no. If there's a conflict, any voting member that believes they have a conflict should confirm the conflict with the city attorney and get a statement to read recusing themselves prior to the public hearing or discussion of the matter. The member with the conflict, conflict must recuse themselves and leave the meeting room during the discussion and vote, much like councilmember Edmondson did tonight. This would not affect the number of votes required to pass a motion at a city council or board of adjustment meeting, that is still four. All right. Rules of procedure, I'm trying to talk fast, sorry. Rules of procedure, there's no option to pass when it's a member's turn to vote, yes and no, or a and no are the only two options. Public hearing process, uh, recommending a few changes here. If a request is made to continue a public hearing prior to the opening, a motion must be made to continue to a date certain that would not require rep publication of the notice, so it could be at the, the next meeting. If a continuation, if continuing after testimony has begun, a motion for a public hearing and associated bills should be made to a date certain. The chair would, it would indicate that additional testimony can be given at the continued hearing. When they reopen that hearing at this next meeting, they should state that the testimony given at the prior public hearing will be continued to this public, the current public hearing. After the public hearing, comment in support of or opposition to. The chair will note, the public comment portion of the hearing is complete, and we will move forward to board discussion while the public hearing is open. All board discussions should be made on the record. If needed, the mayor or majority of the council may reopen the public hearing to allow for council or board discussion or additional testimony. The court reporter will remain available through the completion of the bills, of the votes on the associated bills. All right. It's recommended that the board does not have adequate, if the board does not have adequate information or is requesting improvements by the applicant, a motion to continue the public, continue during the public hearing should be made. If an item was presented to planning commission and the council requests an improvement of the applicant, the project would not be required to go back to planning commission, but continue to a future council date. Onboarding and training improved, we'll have, uh, the members be asked to sign a letter so that way they understand the expectations of their attendance and the in-person meeting expectation, and, uh, it will also cover the removal for lack of adherence to either of those criteria. That will be done at the time that they take their oath of office. The city attorney will update and conduct annual board training to thoroughly cover appropriate sections of the sunshine law and rules of procedure. If a board chooses to have a visitor section on the agenda, this is not required, but if they choose to have a visitor section on their agenda, the board should not engage in discussion, but take the matter under advisement and consideration for a future agenda. This will eliminate any sunshine law violations because the subject was not included on the agenda for discussion. Speaker time will be limited to three minutes at the discretion of the chair. A board may have a miscellaneous or new business section on their agenda, but this should be used for, only for direction to staff and not for discussion. Again, discussion should be included on the agenda for a future meeting to avoid those sunshine law violations. Uh, staff will create a board and commission booklet, which will outline the composition and purpose for each of the city's boards. This will be included on the city's website and printed for distribution at events to encourage participation and, uh, filing of applications. The city's vol, application will be updated to reflect the voluntary diversity, equity, and inclusion questions to provide information to allow appointments to be more reflective of our community. Also, former city employees will not be considered for app, appointment until two years after separation from the city employment. Uh, we currently have a board and commission member guide, uh, that will be updated to reflect some of the, you know, information provided in this presentation, and the member guide will also be distributed during the board's annual training with the city attorney. Next steps, okay, so next week we will, um, have available for your consideration the codes, the code amendments, the bills approving the code amendments, there will be two, one for the Unified Development Code text amendments, and then one for the general, um, board approvals. Uh, resolutions approving boards, rules of procedure. We'll also begin appointments for those positions as soon after April eighteenth as possible. Um, many should be on the May second agenda, so mayor, we have a little bit of work to do. The CDBG appointments were appointed tonight in order to meet HUD timelines, and the term for CDBG members will be, will end on September first of each year. Uh, Matt Wright of Community Development will review additional code amendments that will be presented within ninety days. Uh, that one included the development, the development advisory committee voted three to zero, and the planning commission voted nine to one to approve the proposed Unified Development Code text amendments, and I'll turn it over to Assistant Director Matt Wright.
All right, thank you, mayor and council. Um, building off of what Cheryl has presented, um, that encompasses all boards and commissions, there are six boards and commissions, uh, contained within the Unified Development Code, which requires a UDC text amendment to, um, to adopt any changes to their code sections. The, uh, this is the first set of code amendments, uh, before you this evening, which standardizes the processes and procedures. A second set of code amendments, as Cheryl mentioned, is anticipated later in the spring to address other items, including implementing neighborhood meeting requirements for certain planning applications, and amendments to the downtown review board and historic preservation commission to address overlapping and conflicting processes and procedures as they have the same, uh, for the most part have the same boundaries and types of applications that they review. Um, has, as Cheryl has covered the changes that apply to all boards and commissions, I will just address the unique, unique changes that are requested for each board and commission under the Unified Development Code. Um, the first is the planning commission. Um, to assist with appointments and quorums, there are proposals to reduce the number of members for multiple boards and commissions. The planning commission is proposed to be reduced from eleven members to nine members. Staff believes that now is the ideal time to make this decision, um, or this reduction as there is currently an unfilled vacancy, and one commissioner has submitted a formal request not to be reappointed in April. Uh, the other, um, unique item for planning commission is that the position of secretary has been added to be in keeping with the language from the state statutes, and the secretary will serve the role as vice chair. For the board of adjustment, um, no changes in membership are proposed, however, planning commission liaisons are no longer needed as they are not required by state statute, and variances are reviewed separately from the planning commission. We've also added the vice chair role to the board of adjustment. For the appearance review committee, there is no changes to membership proposed. However, we have increased the term from two years to three years to be consistent with other boards and commissions. And we are also clarifying that the appearance review committee reviews site plan design review applications and not building permits, which is what is currently in the code. Historically, the appearance review committee has not reviewed building permits. They only review site plan and design review applications in the Adams Ferry Parkway overlay zoning district. The next two commissions have probably the most significant changes to them. The first is the historic preservation commission. Currently, there are nine members, including a council member and a planning commissioner. We are proposing to reduce that to seven members with the council member and planning commissioner serving as non-voting liaisons. We've also updated the qualifications of the membership for the commission to be consistent with the state historic preservation offices guidelines for being a certified local government, which keeps the city eligible for historic preservation-related grants and programs. The downtown review board, currently there are nine members, including two council members, two staff, including the community development director and public works director, as well as two planning commissioners and one alternate planning commissioner. We are proposing to reduce that to five members and remove council members, staff, and planning commissioners as voting members. Three of the members will be residents, with every effort being made to choose residents who live, work, or own property in the downtown zoning district. The other two members will be one representative each from downtown alive and the chamber of commerce. And then the last board and commission in the unified development code is the development advisory commission. There are no changes in membership proposed here, and all the changes that are being made are consistent with the other boards and commission changes across the city. The development advisory commission met on March sixteenth and reviewed the UDC text amendments and recommended unanimous approval of the amendments without any added comments. The planning commission held a public hearing on March twenty eighth at which no one spoke in support of or in opposition to the request. The planning commission recommended approval of the text amendments by a vote of nine in favor, one opposed. Staff believes that the proposed text amendments meet all five review criteria for text amendments. The amendments will provide a more streamlined process for the conduct of meetings, which improves the review and decision-making process, thereby improving the development review process. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the text amendments. And I'll stand for any questions, and Cheryl is also available.
Any questions?
A couple. Matt, on the voting members, you removed the council members and staff from downtown advisory board, correct?
Correct.
And so now, am I right, would that include then the CDBG would be the only commission or board that would have voting members from the council?
I believe so.
Then the CDBG would still continue to do that?
CDBG would still continue to have council members on there. The primary reason for keeping a representative from each district on CDBG is because there's several months of work that go into that before it gets to council, so we want to make sure that the council has input on that.
And then I think I have two little, first of all, I think this is great. Personally wanted to see this happen and I commend everybody for doing this. If I'd have been on there, it would have probably taken you thirty meetings to do it because I'd have talked too much. But we had an experience a few months ago, I don't recall the session, but we had like six members of the planning commission that were able to attend, so we postponed or canceled some of the agenda for that. With these amendments, would that happen or would that be just discretionary? Would we just keep going since we only have nine and six becomes two-thirds?
Yeah, the quorum would drop from six to five with a nine-member commission. It would probably still be on a case-by-case basis depending on what public hearings we have and what kind of projects are coming available. If we know that we're really close on a quorum and we may lose a commissioner between now and then, we usually let the applicants know that we, there's a risk that the planning commission could be continued.
Okay, and then a little question. Solid Waste Commission, currently I don't think there's any scheduled meetings. Do we need to say that's an on-call for the people that are on it? We've only had one meeting in the last four years?
Yes, it is on-call.
It is on there, I didn't see that in the list, I'm so sorry. But hey, thank you for that. And again, you guys are on the group, tremendous job.
Yeah, your honor, relative to the capital improvements program, that's a five-year vision of all the projects that we have. And without that committee reviewing it, I guess at the, when it's being formed each year, the, all the weighing that goes into that before the public hearing will be from staff only?
Yeah, and that's pretty much how we've been doing it currently, but we've just built in that extra meeting. Originally, when we had CIP, it was actually a review committee where we would score each project that was brought forward. We switched it over to a review committee when we started doing a funded and unfunded list. And so that's when we were like, here's the money that we have, here's what projects are available, here's what staff recommends, and if there are any changes, we'll do that. So the review is more of a discussion with part of the council, and we wanted to make sure we were having that discussion with the entire council during the public hearing and at that meeting. And then throughout our district meetings and stuff, we can tell you what projects we're prioritizing or what has come up that we would like the council to consider to address.
Yeah, there's a lot of weighing going on there, so.
We were getting quite a bit of.
You're saying that we're, that council will not see it until the public hearing?
Well, we'll have discussions during our district meetings and our other budget discussions when we're preparing for the budget. We've kind of always just treated CIP with more, you know, we'd actually have more interaction and attention through the review commission, but not only with people that were having budget authority. So like the planning commission, we don't present that at the CIP, at the planning commission anymore, it's just an informational item to show that it's in compliance of the comp plan. And so we also had members from other commissions on that review committee that weren't part of the decision-making body. So we were trying to get it to the people that are making the decisions and talking about it more in advance of just that review committee.
So I guess, so there are planning commission members on the review committee?
There have been in the past year, and department commission as well.
Okay, I guess I'm drawing a little bit of a conflict, maybe I'm putting the CIP, do we have different terms for them, the review committee versus, because it looked like we were eliminating the CIP review.
In its current form, which is, we're eliminating, but it was never established formally. So if you look in the code or in any of our documents, we don't have mention of a CIP review committee. And we've been alternating council members, but there's no formal process to do that. So we're just trying to clean it up at the same time.
All right, thanks.
Anyone else?
If I may, real quick.
Yeah.
Ron, kind of in lines with that, it seems to be in the group that was there that those meetings that we were having, pretty much everything was set and done and spelled out, and it was more of a formal presentation to the three council members there, not something that basically we changed or anything. It was already pretty much done by staff, organized, here it is, they make the presentation. So why have that meeting when they make that presentation to the council as a whole? So that's some of the reasoning for dropping that.
Anyone else?
Yes, thank you, your honor. I just, I know we've gone through all this, and I just want to say that there has been a lot of time and a lot of effort put into this, and kudos to all the department heads. We chomped into their time quite a bit to get this done, and Cheryl has been the leading force on the majority of this. And between her and staff, they're the ones that actually got this thing rolling and satisfied all of the questions that the council reps had. And I just wanted to thank them, thank staff, thank Cheryl and Christine, and of course, you know, with the planning commission or the planning department, all the department heads have done an exceedingly great job on this.
Okay, anyone else before we go to the public?
Yes, sir. I was the quiet one on the panel, and I won't go into it all, but I will ditto her what she said.
Ditto accepted.
Thank you.
Your honor, I will say his silence spoke volumes at that meeting, just to give him credit. Also, a lot of this effort we did was to get it done prior to the appointments that you'd make in the first part of May to all the boards and commissions, so that's, maybe explains why we were kind of questioning what came up in the consent agenda. But that's what we were trying to do. Our goal was to have this together, presented, and done prior to your appointments to those committees and commissions.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go to the public. All of you out there, anyone here to speak in support of, support of, opposition to, opposition to, unless there are other comments from the council, I'm going to close this public hearing. It is closed. Next, who would like to introduce bill number forty-nine sixty-eight?
I will introduce it, your honor. First reading of bill number four-nine-six-eight and ordinance amending section one-two-two-point-zero-one-four, public access of closed arrest records and section two-two-oh dot seven-seven-five stalking definitions penalties of the code of ordinances, city of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Your honor, move the bill to be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, on the paper, aye?
Aye.
All in the same side?
Second reading of bill number four-nine-six-eight and ordinance amending section one-one-two-dot-one-four-zero, public access of closed arrest records and section two-two-oh dot seven-seven-five stalking definitions penalty, penalties of the code of ordinances, city of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Your honor, move the bill to be approved on a second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Council members Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Cole Pepper.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Levisay.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously and given ordinance number five-one-zero-one.
On the visitor's section, I have one visit appearance form. It was from Dennis and Mary Clements.
I'm here.
All right, you want to come up and state your concerns?
I want to thank the council for an opportunity to speak. I've submitted a few email attachments as a bit of visual evidence for my concern. I live in Blue Springs on the corner of Seventeenth and Main, and we had a recent repavement process that took place. If you look at the, that photo there, we can start with. This is my granddaughter. There, you can see a tire mark going right down the sidewalk. Now, prior to the repavement of that intersection on Main Street, there was a grassy strip along the, there was the road surface, there was a change in elevation with a grassy strip, then a sidewalk, and of course, this would be my side yard. After the repavement took place, the elevation of the street was raised to the same level as the sidewalk and the grassy incline was completely eliminated. Now, since that time, more and more traffic has been driving down the sidewalk endangering my grandchildren. Your honor, could he go with the microphone, please? Sorry to pick it up. Since the time of the repavement and the elimination of this change in elevation and the grassy strip, more and more people have been driving down the sidewalk endangering my grandchildren and other pedestrians in my walk along the sidewalk, which there are a lot of people do, we like to get out and walk. Previously, a driver who was not paying attention would sense a change in elevation as their car left the pavement. Under the current conditions, there's nothing for a distracted driver to give them the Indian indication that they're running down the sidewalk and endangering my kids. I would like the council to come up with some way to correct a potentially dangerous situation for not only for my grandchildren, but for the other pedestrians in the area. I've seen in, you can see in that picture there, that's my lovely granddaughter on her scooter, you see the tire marks where people are driving literally through my yard and continuing down the sidewalk completely without regard for the safety of anyone other than themselves.
Let me ask you this question, did you report that to the city, to our public works? Have they not been out there to check that out?
No. Mr. Mayor, I'm here tonight, I'm not really familiar with all the procedures, how to do these things, I'm just a concerned grandparent. Now, if you go to one of those other photos, you'll see that there's photographic evidence of the grassy strip, keep going there, that's my grandson there, he's standing right on the tar tread.
I guess the point I want to make, though, if the city staff, Chris, have you, are you aware of this, of what he's talking about?
I was made aware of his concern this morning, but we have not had an opportunity to discuss it.
Yeah, and I guess the point is, and I appreciate you bringing it to the council, but the staff is the one that's going to have to go deal with that, and they need to be aware of it so they can address it. The council can't address it.
I understand.
The staff is going to have to address it, so.
I have to admit, I've never really tried to bring anything to anyone's attention before. I was glad when they decided to repave the street because it did need it. The concerns have been growing since we've had more and more traffic driving down the sidewalk, and I'm a grandparent, you know, if you guys could do anything for me, I would like to have a ten-foot wall, concrete wall there, my grandkids. So if you guys would vote on that right now, I'll go along with it.
But what I like, Chris will get with you so they can check it out.
Okay.
See what can be done.
All right, I appreciate you guys giving me a chance to talk.
Well, yeah, I appreciate you bringing it to our attention because if you had not taken it to them, if you had not come and spoken to us, we wouldn't be able to put you in touch with our public works so they can take a look at it and see what they can do to resolve that.
I'd sure hope they can do something because like that picture with my little grandson out there standing there, he goes around the corner so fast. I hope you guys would help me, maybe make a recommendation for the guys at the planning public works? If you guys could look into this for me.
Public works will be the one that will come to you and see if they can't figure out something to resolve.
Again, thank you very much for your time.
You bet. All right, thank you for bringing it to our attention. We are going to go to Merrill announcements. There are about three I want to bring to your attention that you already know about. Tomorrow's election day, don't forget out and vote. All of you in the audience, as well as those that might be watching on cable TV. Secondly, tonight, Roy Williams will be in heaven because KU is playing North Carolina in the Final Four. And it's going to be interesting to see where his loyalty is going to be tonight. But he is, no lose for him, he's coached both of them. But on a sadder note, I think council have already been informed of this. Former Jackson County judge and Blue Springs prosecutor Vernon Scoville passed. He was found today, so certainly hard to go out to him. He was a long time free in a man. We served together in the House of Representatives, and we've known each other probably close to forty years. So we're saddened about his death. And next, I'm going to do Thaustapunda. Tonight's come from Thomas Edison, and I quote, "I have not failed, I just found ten thousand ways that won't work," end quote. Unless someone has something else, our city attorney is going to read a motion for someone to so move for executive session.
Your honor, at this time, the appropriate motion would be to move that this public body go into closed session pursuant to section six-ten-point-oh-two-one, sub-paragraphs one and three, revised statutes of Missouri for the purposes of legal actions and litigation and hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting employees, and that any minutes, documents, and other records discussed or taken during the closed session remain closed, and that the regular open session of this body stand adjourned at the completion of the executive session.
So move. Is there a second? Second, roll call, please.
Council members Edmondson.
Aye.
Cole Pepper.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Levisay.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
We're going to ask everyone to excuse themselves from the council chamber, and we're going to go into executive session. Yeah, just meet here. Yeah, we didn't stay here.